All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of the Tri-Cities together, or Tri-City Meeting of the Council, today July 17, 2024. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to item number two, Roll Call and Introduction of Special Guests. I will go ahead and start. I am the Vice Mayor of the City of Kingman, and I'm going to run the meeting for just this item, so I'll pass it off to Cal.
Thank you. I'm Cal Sheehy, Mayor of Lake Havasu City.
I'm Steve DiAmico, Mayor of Bullhead City.
Toby Donner, City Manager of Bullhead City.
Jess Kudus, City Manager of Lake Havasu.
Tim Walsh, City Manager, City of Kingman.
Annie Meredith, City of Kingman, City Clerk.
Ally Blum, Lake Havasu City.
Nancy Campbell, Lake Havasu City Councilwoman and Vice Chair, RTAC.
Good morning. Juan Lee Saraga, Bullhead City Council.
Travis Pruitt, City of Bullhead City.
Anthony Kozlowski, Assistant City Manager, Lake Havasu City.
Sue Ann Mello, Mojave County Treasurer.
Smiley Ward, Kingman City Council.
Todd Steinberger, ADOT Northwest District.
Mike Gorman, Kingman City Engineer.
Gilbert Smaby, I'm here just as a citizen. I'm also running for the County Board of Supervisors, District Four.
Good morning. Sam Elters, County Manager of Mojave County.
Good morning. Edgar Kujero, Assistant City Manager, City of Bullhead City.
Tina Moline, City of Kingman.
Debbie Ogden, City Clerk, Bullhead City.
Okay, great. Item number three is the end. Oh, excuse me.
Sorry. Vice Mayor, we have joining us via Zoom, we have Coral Evans, Dave Hawkins, Janice Gallegos, Kelly Williams, Michelle Lynn, Rodney Head, Shannon Davis, Vajet Sari, and that is it.
Thank you, Annie. All right, item number three, Annual Appointment of Tri-City Council Chairperson. I'm going to turn this over to Mayor Sheehy.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sam Elers. Every year, the Tri-City Council rotates who the Chairperson is, and so the City of Kingman with Mayor Watkins was last year. This year is Lake Havasu City's turn, and what that means is the Mayor and the Clerk's office really work hand-in-hand on this position. And then next year, it's Mayor DiAmico and Bullhead City's turn. So I think we do need a motion to appoint me as the Chairperson. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
In a second. All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Lake Havasu City as the Chairperson for the Tri-City Council for the next year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll now have a call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the Tri-City Council on items within the jurisdiction of the Tri-City Council. If you'd like to speak, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Mayor Sheehy, I just want to recognize that we did just have somebody join us via Zoom, Vam Sheel Setti with Kittleson is on.
Excellent. All right, we have no in-person citizens looking to speak to us. I called to the public. Are there any virtual Ms. Meredith that signed up?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item five is the Approval of Minutes from our meeting on April 25, 2024. Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes.
A second.
All right, we have a motion from Mayor DiAmico and a second from Vice Mayor Sam Elers to approve the minutes from our April 25 Tri-City Council meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item six is Updates from Mojave County Board of Supervisors or other elected officials. We don't have any of our Board of Supervisors members here, but we do have Treasurer Mello. Do you have any remarks you would like to make to the Tri-City Council? All right, well, thank you so much for being here, for your support. Dr. Evans, would you have anything to report from Senator Kelly's office? All right, well, we'll move on, and if there is an update, we'll circle back to that.
I apologize. I don't have an update. I'm just here today to listen.
Excellent. Well, thank you for being here, and thank you for your support and the Senator's support.
Mayor Sheehy, we do have the County Manager here. I'm not sure if he has an update on behalf of Mojave County.
Mr. Elters, do you have an update? If we can actually, Ms. Ogden, if you can get the microphone.
Good morning. I don't have anything specific to update, Mr. Mayors and members, unless there is a question for me. We are gearing up for the primary election that is currently our top priority. Securing voter location and volunteers and ensuring that we have all the pieces in place to carry it through without incident is our top priority. So outside of that, nothing specific, but I'd be happy to address or answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Elters. Are there any questions?
No question, but would just like to congratulate Mr. Elters on his appointment to the ADOT Board, and you know, it's great that we actually have someone locally that we can rely on for state transportation issues. It's kind of been a minute since our county's been represented, and obviously with your background, you'll do great for us, and we appreciate that.
Thank you, Toby, and thank you to everyone. I regret not mentioning that when I introduced myself. I am on the State Transportation Board and Eurorepresentative, and I think you all know, it's a large district, has four counties in it, Yuma, La Paz, Yavapai, and Mojave. So it's a role that I know a bit about. I've been at it before, both at the staff level and at the board level. Please reach out, anything that you have a need for or a concern about. It's my intent to be accessible, and I will serve to the best of my ability, and I consider it an honor, so I look forward to hearing from you. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Elters, and congratulations. We're honored to have you. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Legislative Update. Mr. Belshi.
Mayor Sheehy, I do not have anybody from the League that is on the call with us.
Okay. Yeah, we're moving quite quickly through our agenda, but see, if you give it to Havasu, we become very efficient. Yeah, just kidding, just kidding. That was more for DiAmico. Yeah. Yeah. All right, number eight is our State Legislature Candidate Introductions. What we did is we wanted to have candidates that were impactful for all three of our communities, and so there's certainly elections that are going to impact all of our communities with Board of Supervisors, but they don't all represent all three of the communities. So we narrowed it down to just the candidates that are running for the state legislature, the state House, and for the state senate. We did invite those candidates, but we did not have any response for them to appear, so if any of them do arrive a few minutes late, we'll come back and have that addressed, but they did not commit to being here this morning. So then we'll move on to item 10, which is the Arizona Department of Transportation Update. Todd?
Good morning, Council. Yeah, here in the Kingman area, we have the East Kingman TI, the deck replacement. They've been working on shoring, and then in a couple weeks, they'll be shifting traffic on I-40 and starting the deckwork up on I-40 east of Kingman in the Willows. We're doing a brand-new bridge there, wrapping that project up with the pavement transitions, and then down on I-40 near the California border and SR-95 going to Havasu. We have a pavement preservation project. FNF will be doing that work. We're just kicking that off. Down on US-93 on the county line down around Nothing to the junction of State Route 97, we have a pavement preservation project that's ongoing. And then on SR-95, the Sarah Park to I-40, that one's basically wrapped up, doing one final item with a cattle guard on our section north of town. Know you guys had a ribbon cutting. Appreciate all the teamwork and effort on that. And then west of Kingman here, from Holy Moses Wash out to milepost 33 to Walnut Creek, this is an ongoing pavement preservation. And then you have the I-40, Fort Rock TI to Markham Wash, eastbound, that's on the county line heading to Flagstaff, pavement preservation, and then down on SR-95, the Bullhead City Parkway to Courtright, the pavement preservation. We finalized that project. We're also going to be seen on the Transportation Board on Friday, the turnback over to Bullhead City for the portion of 95 that falls within the city limits. Yeah, here are some pictures for the bridge replacement up on Willow Creek on I-40. Here's the deck replacement for the East Kingman TI right here in town, some of the stormwater measures, the traffic shift, narrower lanes. We also have the north of Nothing, SR-95, some pictures here of them doing the paving work, the Walnut Creek to Holy Moses, and then the Fort Rock to Markham Wash. And then also, we have the West Kingman TI, the system-to-system interchange. It's kicking off. You've started seeing them placing TCB on US-93. They're going to be next week setting up some traffic control on I-40. That's going to be at night. And then also, we have the closure of Clacks Canyon Road currently in place. Here's some upcoming preservation projects up on US-93 from just east of Dolan Springs all the way into Kingman. We've got a fiscal year '26 fourth quarter project planned. That's a pavement preservation. Then we have the Holy Moses out to Rattlesnake Wash here on I-40 going through Kingman. That's currently advertised. That's a pavement preservation project, Millenfield. Then down near the California border to Needle Mountain Road, that's from milepost zero to two, tying into the current one that's under construction. That's advertised. It's a pavement preservation, Millenfield. And then we have east of Kingman from the US-93 junction up to Silver Springs Road, heading to Flagstaff, a fiscal year '26 third quarter, same thing, Millenfield pavement preservation. And then down on US-93, heading to Phoenix, just south of Wiki Up, next fiscal year, third quarter, Millenfield pavement preservation. Some modernization projects coming up, north of Kingman on US-93, up near Bonanza Drive and Tony Avenue, various safety improvements, looking at striping, potential indirect laps, try to improve the safety up there on the US-93 corridor. That's going to be this fiscal year, second quarter. It's about an $800,000 project. On I-40, we have broadband all the way from the California State Line to Flagstaff. That's going to be at the end of this fiscal year advertised. And then heading to Phoenix, it's outside of the Mojave County area, but from milepost 175 to 177, the safety project fiscal year '27 to put in passing lanes. And then on SR-95 and Havasu, we have two segments of Centered Raised Median from South Palo Verde to Price. That's going to be second quarter of this fiscal year. Then future expansion projects, we have the US-93 Keane Springs. That's in between Kingman and Wiki Up from milepost 106 to 110. That's going to be the last segment on that portion from 93 to Wiki Up to be four-lane divided. Then in fiscal year '26, we have the Big Jim Wash project. That's in Yavapai County, south of Wiki Up. Fiscal year '26, $110 million, four-lane divided. We have the Kingman Crossing, traffic interchanged. No specific dates on when we're advertising that one. Project is currently on hold. And then I-40 Rancher Santa Fe, traffic interchange. The PM and our staff and the design consultant is working on advertising that on Friday this week. And then here's a slide. It provides you with the link to the West Kingman TI, the traffic interchange, the construction. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Steinberger. One question I have is the broadband from the state line to Flagstaff. What does that mean for users? So you're running the infrastructure?
We're running the infrastructure, the conduit. We're providing some broadband service that's going to help some of our offices along the corridor. Anybody, any private company that wants to use that conduit, they can get an agreement through our broadband office, through ADOT, and use that conduit and go through their office and the local district's encroachment permit process.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions, members?
Just a comment. I, we in Kingman are looking forward to hosting ADOT for a very long time, so.
Thank you, yeah.
Question on the last slide, the West Kingman TI.
Yes.
So is the exit to, I think I've seen this before, but the exit to Bullhead City, Laughlin, Golden Valley, is that pretty much the same spot?
You'll still have the existing traffic interchange, and then you'll have the flyover ramp that goes from Phoenix to Vegas. It pills off just about a mile and a half approximately from the existing interchange, and then it just ties in on US-93 just outside of Kingman, right before the State Route 68 interchange, Toby.
Okay. Could we just let it be known that we're
Mr. Cotter, will you pull your mic closer?
I'm sorry.
They're having a hard time hearing you. Thank you.
The question was about the exit for Golden Valley, Bullhead City, Laughlin on the new I-40, US-93, West Kingman traffic interchange. And if we could just lobby for some really good signage there over the course of this design project, because I think there's some concern, at least that the way that design is, there may be some confusion on how to get to Golden Valley and Bullhead City and Laughlin versus right now. It's very clear, right? So maybe I'm wrong, and I mean, this is a great project. Everybody knows it. I just want to make sure that we're lobbying for good signage now and as this project is developed.
No, understood. The signage went through the design process with our traffic team, regional traffic us here in the district. It will be clear, and we'll make sure before construction's complete, if we have to do adjustments, we will.
We'd love to see it and participate the best We'd love to see it and participate the best we can. Thank you.
Mr. Knutson.
Mr. Chair, thank you. On that very first slide you had there, you had pavement preservation for Havasu. You had a similar project for Bullhead City, I think it was $35 million for Havasu. Does that include what already took place or are we talking about doing?
That's the one that just got completed.
Okay, that's the completion.
Sorry for the confusion there. Yes, that's the one that's completed. It's still on there because it's still on our books.
Okay, perfect. And that included a fog seal that's been completed as well?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. And then, just not a complaint, but we're seeing a lot of dollars being spent, you know, through your presentations. Is there, do you know where all the money is coming from or what happened between last year and this year?
There's not an increase in funding. It's still, you know, our district is lucky enough through our planning to programming process to get a lot of these projects and everything. Also too, sad to say, it takes the roads getting into the current condition that they're in. But yeah, there's not been an increase in funding. It's still the same process that it goes through, through our planning to programming.
Okay. And then lastly, thanks, we've been communicating by email and all your efforts. Anything you can do to help us with the cleanup of the trash and debris on 95 is greatly appreciated. I think Anthony Brovich talked about some type of a contract for cleanup. Do you have an update on that at all?
Okay, we did not get any successful bidders on this statewide litter contract. We're looking at some different options, going through our procurement process, maybe some on-call litter contracts, get them more regionalized. You know, that's kind of the update of where we are now, not any successful bidders. So we had to go back to the drawing board.
Mr. Chair, sorry. A follow-up, Todd, is that like, are we reaching out to like landscape companies or what was the type of businesses or services that you were soliciting?
The majority of them were landscape companies. There's some other waste disposal companies that we did reach out to for that also.
Keep trying.
No, we understand and we'll work with you guys and make sure we keep Havasu clean. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Alters, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Council. Just not to contradict what Todd told you, but these projects are the result of planning that took place last year and there was some infusion from the surplus from state treasury. So it was really needed and that's why it was put into the, and programmed. And just to offer another comment, the board, just the State Transportation Board, last month in June approved the five-year construction program that is 2025 through 2029. District Six, which we are all a part of, will be receiving just a hair short of a billion dollars over that five-year period and that is in excess of every other district, State Transportation Board district in the state. Has nothing to do with me being on the board. I truly, I truly believe it is because this district has had a need, a lot of need over the years and it's being recognized and funding programmed for it. So just wanted to share that with you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Alters. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, if you want to just make your way to the podium. Oh, you go to the podium.
I have this question as well.
It's kind of a follow-up that Sam had, which is, how much of the funding, ADOT facilitates a lot of the appropriation, this is for you, Todd, the question? Yes, sorry. Don't go all the way, don't go. But bottom, how much of the appropriation fund, RTAC, we did an appropriation fund and ADOT does facilitate a majority of that? How much of this funding is part of that?
I'd have to go back and get you the exact number. Councilman Campbell, I don't know that right off the top of my head.
But we did get an influx from an appropriation bill. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Steinberger? Yeah, I would just like to say that we drove past ADOT cleaning the roads on our way up here, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yes, we appreciate that. So, yeah, thank you for all your efforts. All right, we'll move on to item 11 is the rural transportation update. Mr. Adam is not able to be with us today, but he did include a summary packet that I believe are at your tables. But Ms. Meredith said she would also email it out to the distribution list, so everyone will be able to get the update from RTAC from Mr. Adam of what they're doing. The next item on our agenda is, I'll actually turn it over to Ms. Meredith to introduce for us for the WACOG Regional Transit update.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor Sheehy. So Roland Hulse with WACOG was not able to attend today, but he did provide an introduction. He asked that I shared with you. Says, "Work on the WACOG Regional Transit Implementation Plan concluded in the spring of 2024 and the plan was adopted by the WACOG Executive Board in March. The purpose of the study was to determine the feasibility of an interconnecting transit system in the tri-city area and also to guide the future expansion of our existing transit systems by analyzing current public demand as well as any available funding and resources. To present the findings of the plan, he'd like to introduce project lead Vamshi Yalaseti with Kittleson and Associates who is joining us via Zoom."
Can you guys hear me okay? Hello?
Yep, we can hear you. You'll just want to speak nice and loud.
Thank you. Thank you, Meredith. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having me here today. I apologize Roland couldn't be here to talk about the findings of this project, but he asked me to provide an update on, you know, the overall findings of the project and where we ended at the end of the day. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. So if you all remember, this regional transit implementation plan was initiated by WACOG a couple of years ago and as Meredith mentioned, it was drafted up early this year and was adopted by the WACOG Board as well. For today, the topics I'll be covering are kind of recap what the purpose of the plan was and then essentially talk about what we ended up as the short-term recommendations, what we ended up as the long-term recommendations and the governance structure that we proposed and what's the next steps after the project's complete. So the purpose of the plan, again, we, if you all, you know that, you all know that region really well, there's existing transit services within each of the tricities, you know, Havasu, Kingman and Bullhead City, but there's very limited connections connecting these three cities. So the purpose for us was to see if there was truly a need or a demand for a regional transit service connecting these three cities. And then if there was a need, you know, we were to evaluate potential, you know, service scenarios and then come up with a realistic and a sustainable implementation plan. So I'll kind of touch on findings on, you know, the demand analysis, the short and long-term needs as well as the governance as well. We kind of followed a four-step approach. I'm not going to bore you with all the details that are on this, but essentially in phase one, we looked at what existing transit services were available in the region, both local within the cities as well as any regional services. And then we tried to assess between each of the tricity areas and including Quadside and Parker, you know, what kind of travel really happens, you know, the types of trips. And then we also looked at the region as a whole to develop a profile to see, you know, looking at the census in the American Community Survey to see if the population types would support a regional transit system. And then we moved on to assess if there was demand and then we followed up with a community survey. We got really good feedback from that community survey. And then, you know, the most important thing is to see if we were to recommend, you know, a transit service, would it really work with the market or the region be able to support it? So that's another item that we evaluated as well. And then we looked at service options. We evaluated the feasibility of each options and then also did a financial analysis to see how much each of the recommendations would cost and then identified some potential funding sources that could be pursued once the plan's complete. And then we came up with a governance structure that would sustain these recommendations. And then we posted this draft plan on the website for public review for a 30-day period and the plan also includes phase implementation. So kind of going through step by step on how we came about recommendations, you know, and we worked with each of the existing providers, the major providers in the region, the Bullhead Transit, Camelback Express, Wildfire Transit, Kingman Transit, National Asylum, Cabot Transit. We also reached out to several other public and private small providers that are in the region as well. And this provided us a good picture of what the current transit conditions exist within the region. As you can see on the map, you'll see darker lines in the Bullhead area, Kingman area and Havasu area. South of Havasu, you'll see some green lines out of Quadside that go up to Parker and Havasu and then westwards by. Essentially, what this is showing is between the tricity areas, there's not much reliable regional connections today. Quadside, on the other hand, is acting as a regional service and providing services to nearby communities. Then we moved on to public feedback to see if there were, if we were to provide a regional transit system, what would they like to see? We asked them if the service was available, what kind of trips would they make using this regional transit system? Not surprisingly, a lot of folks would have used it for shopping. Next was work, but a pretty close third was healthcare, which kind of surprises quite a bit that there was so much demand for healthcare trips occasionally. And then we also asked, you know, beyond these three inner-city areas, what other regional travel destinations that they'd like connections to? Ones that came up were Las Vegas Airport and the Yuma Region. And then we asked them, in addition to these big cities, Kingman, Lake House and Bullhead Cities, we heard loud and clear that, you know, Golden Valley, Peach Springs, Parker, Quadside, Fort Mojave and Mojave Valley were other small communities that were interested in connections if a regional transit was there. Again, we asked the type of service they would prefer. Again, this was not providing any funding restrictions. We heard, as you would expect, people want faster, quicker express service routes between each of these communities and then frequency, you know, frequent service was there between these communities that didn't require them to transfer, didn't require them to transfer much between each of the services. Again, this was just general questions, hypothetical questions asked the public if there was a transit, regional transit service, you know, what does it need to look like from the public? So the next step we took was we met with some key stakeholders in the region. A big part of this was one-on-one meetings with existing providers. During these discussions, it was made to, made clear to us that existing transit services that are there within these cities are essentially a real lifeline for the people who actually use them. They also seem to promote economic opportunities for the region, for the individual cities and also, as I mentioned earlier, health stability, a lot of trips were made for health reasons. And then we asked, you know, what kind of connections would make sense between, again, the general response was connecting these tricity areas and then again with Quadside, Parker and the Yuma Region as well. What did the providers, existing providers see as the biggest challenge was obviously political challenges and then, I don't have it on here, but the second close one was Then we start looking at the demographic profile of the region, as you can see on the table to the left. You know, when we do a demographic profile to see who would actually end up using transit, we look at population groups such as elderly populations, folks who are low-income population groups, minority population groups and then disabled folks. So if you see the highlight that sells in orange, you know, pretty much in each of the communities that are highlighted on the top, there's a pretty significant percentage of population that, you know, is a disabled population and this is a key population group that tends to use transit quite a bit. Same thing with the elderly population group, almost all except Peach Springs, shows that, you know, the percentage of people who are elderly is pretty high and that's another key metric that we tend to see if we are to evaluate if a transit system would work. So again, this is reinforcing, you know, the need for a region, really need for transit, not necessarily regional transit. To really determine if there was a regional transit need, what we ended up doing was we purchased a streetlight data. It's a big data source that basically helps us evaluate origin destinations between each of the tricity areas and other smaller communities in the region. So I'll talk quickly on what the top destinations were for each of the tricity areas. When it comes to Kingman, for folks traveling out of Kingman, the number one destination was Golden Valley, about 2,000 trips each day. And then, but the more interesting metric is that of those 2,000 trips, almost half of them are made by low-income folks. Again, keep in mind, these are not folks who are using transit, these are folks who are just traveling between those two communities, but of those 2,000 trips, 1,000 trips are made by low-income folks. Again, a good measure to see when you're looking to see, when you're wanting to evaluate a regional transit corridor. And then if you see, the next one was Bullhead, no, sorry, Kingman to Bullhead was the second one with 888 trips. Again, that's a good number, but not good enough to establish connection between Kingman and Bullhead. And the third one was Lake Havasu City. Again, not much trips between the two communities on a daily basis. Then we looked at Bullhead City, again, for Bullhead City, the number one destination was Fort Mojave. It was a massive 14,000 trips between Bullhead and Fort Mojave. Of those, you know, third of the trips were made by low-income folks, again, a very good metric that supports a regional connection. And then Kingman, if you see, 1,300 trips from Bullhead to Kingman. Of those, 560 were made by low-income folks. And then 506 trips between Bullhead and Lake House, not much of a trip number that can sustain a regional transit connection. When we looked at Havasu, their top destination was Kingman, but as you can see in those numbers to Kingman, Parker and Bullhead City, they're not that high of trips between Lake Havasu and these three destinations. Again, not high numbers to sustain a regional transit. As I mentioned, we got a lot of interest from Golden Valley folks during the survey and during town outreach. So we decided to take a deeper dive to Golden Valley to see what their general patterns are. About 3,000 people go from Golden Valley to Kingman on a daily basis. Again, half of those trips are for shopping and medical reasons, but half the trips are made by low-income folks. You know, that's a really great number that indicates the need for a regional connection. At any point, please feel free to start me with, if you have any questions. So based on all of this demand analysis, we did see a need for a couple regional connections, not necessarily, you know, connecting all communities in the region, just to select a few connections that, you know, could benefit from a regional transit. So we were pretty ambitious and then we kind of developed a short-term needs list and a long-term needs list. So we were pretty ambitious and then we kind of developed a short-term needs list and a long-term needs list. And then presented this to the ADOT Transit folks. And then at that point, ADOT Transit made us aware that transit funding for the entire state is pretty limited. And they probably don't have the funding available to support a new transit agency, be more than that, a regional transit agency, because that means they would cut funding for all the existing providers. So they asked, they sent us back to the drawing board, asked us to be more creative and trying to see if there was really a need, which connections could be moved forward. So then we met with each of the existing providers. We challenged them to see what they can do to, you know, expand their system within their existing dollars and maybe additional support. You know, what can they do to start small connections and then see the benefit? And if it shows good benefit and out in the future, then we can look at more long-term connections. So our number one recommendation, you know, based on the demand and meetings with each of these individual folks, was a small connection from Bullhead City to Fort Mojave. That seemed almost like a no-brainer. I'm not going to do more details of each of the routes per se, but the number one connection that stood out was Bullhead City to Fort Mojave. It would cost about ninety thousand annually to operate this route. The second connection was from Bullhead City to Laughlin. This already happens in an indirect way. It's, I think, the Bullhead City bus drops folks at the boat dock and then folks use the boat dock to transfer to Laughlin Transit. So with now Bullhead City being an MPO that includes Laughlin, this almost seems a no-brainer to, you know, just move passengers, take passengers from Bullhead to Laughlin across the bridge. So that would not require any additional cost. The third recommendation was to establish a connection between Kingman to Golden Valley. This was the short-term recommendation. Again, we were hoping this would be a connection that Kingman Transit could potentially lead if they're able to come up with the funding that's needed. So that would be about ninety-seven thousand dollars annually to operate this route. As I mentioned, between Kingman and Lake Haversu, there wasn't much demand per se for regional transit, but we found two specific groups that reached out to us. One was there's employers, you know, agency employees that travel between Kingman and Lake Haversu on a regular basis. And then there was also students who travel between Kingman and Haversu, because some courses are offered in Lake Haversu that aren't in Kingman and vice versa. So there was enough demand for sort of like a van pool system where it's not that expensive. So this could also be a short-term recommendation. And both Kingman and Haversu expressed interest or willingness to be able to be the umbrella for if such a van pool service were to be established. So that van pool service would have been about fifty-nine thousand dollars to operate annually. And then similarly, same issue between Bullhead and Lake Haversu City, similar two groups that travel regularly. So and again, a van pool service would suffice that type of need. In this case, as well, Bullhead City and Haversu Transit expressed willingness to be the umbrella to operate that round pool. Again, what I'm presenting here is all recommendations, not what what there is today. So this ramp pool would be about seventy thousand dollars annually to operate. In terms of Camel Express, the recommendation was they already operate sort of like a regional transit agency, providing connections to all nearby communities, and the recommendation is to continue doing that. The one issue was with Lake, to Lake and they go to Lake Haversu City. You know, they drop passengers off. So as part of this project, we coordinated with Haversu Transit and they worked out a solution. So this recommendation essentially is complete. Wildfire Transit again operates some regional routes. The recommendation for that system was to continue operating their conventional connections, but also coordinate with Kingman Transit to make sure that the transfer times between Kingman Transit and Wildfire Transit are minimal. And then we started looking at some long-term connections. Again, this was, the idea here is if the short-term recommendations were implemented and were successful, then and only then we move into the long-term recommendations. If there was a need that arises in the future. So one connection was from Bullhead City to Golden Valley, so that would complete the connection from Bullhead City to Kingman, where the connection point would be Golden Valley. Half the route would be operated by Bullhead City and half the route would be operated by Kingman Transit. This one would be about eighty-one thousand dollars again in today's dollars. The next long-term recommendation was to expand the Bullhead City to Fort Mojave connection all the way up to Golden Shores. So that additional expansion would add about forty-five thousand dollars in today's dollars. Again, if things change in the future and there isn't need between Kingman and Haversu, the long-term goal would be to start the connection from Lake Haversu City to Yucca and then complete the connection from Kingman to Yucca. That essentially would be two legs and that would, one would be managed by Kingman, the other one would be managed by Lake Haversu Transit. So this one would be about fifty-eight thousand dollars. As I mentioned, ADOT kind of flat out told us that they don't have the funding available to establish another transit agency. So in terms of governance, you know, we are suggesting no change, just recommending that existing providers expand their service, maximize their dollars and provide some of these smaller connections to meet the today's regional transit demand. Again, in the long term, the recommendation is if the short-term recommendations are successful, then to implement those additional recommendations that we suggested. But even here, we suggest to keep the existing governance format, which would be essentially connections operated by existing providers in Kingman, Lake Haversu, and Bullhead City. I know that was a lot. I apologize. If there's any questions, I'll be having answer.
Thank you, Mr. Yellow City. Thank you for the presentation. I have, obviously with the focus on Lake Haversu, you talk about van pools, which I was reading through the study that you just summarized for us. It seems that van pools are shared driving experiences where there would be a vehicle in which people would share the driving and the cost. What, are you making that recommendation through this study because it's based on cost? Or what do we do with some of our senior populations that might not have driver's licenses or others that don't have licenses that still need to get around in a regional way? What is the reason for the van pool recommendation?
So again, the demand between Haversu and Kingman, for example, wasn't enough to support a fixed route service like you have in Kingman or Haversu or in Bullhead City. So the alternative was a more low-cost option, primarily serve people who commute on a daily basis between these communities. Also, people who go to school from one community to the other on a daily basis. So the van pool would essentially be serving those targeted audiences. And in terms of elderly population groups, that was the sad part about this whole process was that our ambitions were pretty high to establish that connection, but the funding is where it fell apart in terms of there wasn't enough funding to be able to justify that connection.
Okay. Yes, so some of those examples you provided is not what the data shows in the study. So the data shows that it's medical needs is what people would need so that, you know, they're going to schools and work commute. Those numbers were the least, at least for those two Haversu connector routes from Haversu to Bullhead and Haversu to Kingman. So the van pool was just a suggestion because of, it's the most cost-effective option because there's not really a need for it.
The data that I presented was, didn't really dive into specific groups that are commuting between the two areas or three tricity areas. The ramp pool was recommended based on our stakeholder outreach and public outreach that we did, that we got feedback from the colleges and like the city of Kingman, the city of the Caves who folks who commute, you know, during the stakeholder group meetings is what we heard feedback. There wasn't any actual data per se to, that we could show. It was more feedback that we got from these folks during stakeholder meetings that justified the landfall per se.
Yeah, thank you. Are there other questions, Mr. Knutson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am she, I appreciate the presentation. A lot of the study was focused on the data that was collected. Could you talk about how that trip data was collected?
Yes, great question. So we used, again, we use different data sets and we wanted to make sure that we're not relying on one particular data set. So one data set was the census data, which kind of helps us understand the demographic profile. In terms of trips per se, we used a streetlight data that essentially uses cell phone data tracking to be able to say where a person or, you know, starts and then where a person stops. And we were very careful to work with streetlight to make sure that the trips were between these communities when we extracted that information. So a lot of that is cell phone-based tracking data, anonymous cell phone-based tracking data that helped us understand origins and destinations between each of these communities.
Appreciate that. And then the last slide is the governance options. Why no discussion about an RTA or Regional Transit Authority?
That was where ADOT kind of nudged us away from it because there wasn't enough funding. So that is the way we originally proceeded was to establish sort of an RTA. But ADOT cautioned us that they just do not have the funding available to support another transit agency, essentially meaning that they'd have to cut funding from other transit providers.
We're okay with that.
Are there any other questions or comments, members of the council? Yeah, Ms. Pugh?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to ask where the data, if the data showed veterans who were asking, you mentioned that there was a surprise that healthcare was so high and that's not a surprise to us because we get, excuse me, we get calls like that. Since we have a clinic in Haversu, we have a clinic in Kingman, but you might live in Golden Valley, you might live in Golden Shores. I'd like to see the data that reflects that healthcare specifically to the veteran population or something similar to that, because I think there's partnerships that can happen if we incorporate and make that known. My second question is, are the transit vehicles equipped to transport wheelchairs or those who are disabled? Thank you.
Yes. So the first question, yes, we do have pretty detailed data and we will be able to extract, you know, specific, and query out specific information specifically related to veterans and healthcare-related trips. So I'd be happy to follow through with Roland, through Roland, to see exactly the parameters that you want us to query and then I'd be happy to share that information back with you. The second question is, yes, I think any transit agency is required to make sure that their vehicles are, you know, can support disabled population groups, wheelchair and stuff, yeah. So if there was a regional transit service, that would be required, that vehicles be, vehicles are able to accommodate disabled population groups.
Are there any additional questions?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Yellow City. I noticed the data was from two thousand nineteen. Is there any more recent data or how often is it updated?
The data is updated pretty frequently, but when we kicked off the study in twenty nineteen, COVID happened. And then there was a long pause, but you know, right now, just, you know, agree the data was back from twenty nineteen, but you know, it just took us this long to get to this point because of the delays related to COVID, things changing and that ADOT kind of pushing us back. But if there is a desire to look at newer data, yes, that absolutely can be done.
Thank you. My other question was, did you consider any data from rideshare companies like Uber and Lyft? They'll seem to be a little bit more popular in all the cities. Did you guys look into that?
So the streetlight data, I believe, does capture that subgroup as well. So if there was a trip made between, you know, Haversu to Golden Valley using Uber or Lyft, that that would be captured. But we were focused more on the type of the trip. What are they making the trip for? Is it for shopping? Is it for commuting? Or is it for healthcare? But that subgroup of data is also included in streetlight.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Mr. Carter, and then we'll go to Mr. Pruitt.
Yeah, so about ten years, fifteen years ago, this was also looked at. So it's a good update and we appreciate WakeHog and everyone spending the time and working with all the transit agencies to look at regionalism. Just like fifteen years ago, though, funding is the factor. And so we could say, yeah, it's a no-brainer to provide service from Fort Mojave into Bullhead City as that area continues to blossom. But, you know, we need Mr. Elters in the county to have a desire to fund that. And so whether it's seventy to a hundred, I think the realistic number is probably well over a hundred thousand dollars to do it effectively from our perspective. It's going to take the county and the city working together to do that. And, you know, again, we've been kind of thinking about that for a very, very long time. And the city's position is we're going to need some funding from the county to do it. So it's a great basis for us to work off of, but the one that makes the most sense, there isn't funding available for. All these other ones, they seem, and they seemed really good fifteen years ago as they seem good today. But it's difficult. It's a difficult stretch without having a regional approach to how to pay for it. And so I don't want to come off as a naysayer, but without funding, and clearly this doesn't have a funding source, it's just another document that we're probably going to put on a shelf. There is need out there and it's showing. And the one that's probably the easiest to pursue would be the Fort Mojave to Bullhead City route. But we've got to have a funding source. And so WakeHog and Artac and ADOT and the city and county need to get together and figure that out if it's something that is really in demand. However, we don't get a lot of calls at City Hall. Even though the demand may be there, that there's trips being made all the time. It's not as if it's just a continuation. People are, you know, really scrambling for that service. So I think Penny brings up a good point. Is it veterans? Is it healthcare? Should some of the healthcare providers be in this conversation? Should they be kind of responsible for, for some of the transit needs in our county as well? So again, appreciate the fact that, that we did this again and spent the time and money to do it. I just know that the struggle is real to make this actually become a reality.
Mr. Pruitt?
Thank you. Hello, Venishi. Thank you. We appreciate you doing this study. Good information, absolutely. I just had a couple of follow-up questions about the data. If I heard correctly, I just want to make sure I understand the data correctly. If I heard you use cell phone data to kind of track trips and things like that along with some other approaches, I was just curious if this data, does it account for like gaps in those services, people who wouldn't, who would have taken transportation but couldn't take it because they just didn't have enough money, didn't have the means to do it? I'm just curious if this study accounts for that gap in service and of, and opportunity?
Yes. So part of the demand equation is trying to see existing data that shows the that shows the, you know, the type of trip and the number of trips happening between these. But there's other, this, you know, I forget the name of the model that we use, but a propensity model that basically helps us determine, you know, if there was a regional connection, who else would end up using in addition to the typical transit population groups? So yes, that has also been accounted for in making these recommendations.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. I want to thank you for this, this study. It's, it's very good. And again, I'd like to see the data updated. It's changed a lot since COVID. Even the population in our community. I'm going to put on my Vice Chair Artac hat and say, this study is something I'd like to bring back to them. I'd love to start the conversations with them. And then in return, talk about the smart grant funding. There's got to be some sort of funding that can help rural transportation needs like this. And so I appreciate the conversation and let's keep moving the ball forward. It's my recommendation.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may just, and I don't know that it's part of this study, but obviously it shows the funding. And to Toby's point, has there been any consideration in, in public-private partnerships in achieving that funding? I know Bullhead has, you know, proximity to the casinos. I don't know if there's any interest in, in speaking with them about, you know, drawing from those outlying areas, areas and incorporating that into this. Just a thought.
There's definitely been conversations with Bullhead Area Transit and Silver Rider in Laughlin. And so it's just that regulatory environment, we need to cross the river. We'll take our buses across to Laughlin, connect with Silver Rider. And so we're just working through that process. The casinos definitely rely upon it. Our biggest utilization is casino workers that are riding, so it's a big number for us. We just need to be able to cross the river. We're thinking through the MPO that now we'll be able to actually do that in changing our funding formulary. Our bigger issue is then getting outside of the city limits, going south or, or over the hill to Golden Valley. Those are the, those are the, really the financial concerns. And, you know, maybe someday there is funding available. And I think that's what we need Artac and WakeHog and everybody to really dive into. Because it's, it's just very hard for me to say to the mayor and council, okay, let's go into Fort Mojave and it's going to cost $100,000. That, we need the funding source.
Yeah, Mr. Knutson?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I can respond a little bit to it. Reason why I brought up the, the concept of an RTA, because that's exactly what that is. So that, that is a Regional Transit Authority that encompasses the area in which you try to provide services. So Kingman provides inter-interconnection services, Bullhead Havasu does. Then you bring forward an RTA, which is a governance model that allows for another transit system to then make connections to the, the areas. Then you have a RTA through ADOT allow us for some of that, that matching funds that we, that we enjoy now through our individual programs. And then you can bring in, you know, the three cities, you can bring in the county, you can bring in private sector, anybody that wants to participate. You can collect sponsorships and, you know, if a housing complex or apartment complex wants to add a stop, well, then you're part of the RTA. You're contributing towards, towards that effort. Then you're just making connections between the, the major stops within the region and, and then the, and then our own respective transit service continues. But you need some type of governance that takes place from a regional perspective to make those connections. So I wish the RTA was talked about a little bit more here because that's, if we truly want to pursue a regional solution, whether it's today or in the future, we can't do it without some type of authority.
Thank you. I don't have the benefit to see the virtual attendees. Are there anyone that has any questions attending virtually today? All right, we'll go ahead and end this item. Thank you, Mr. Yellow City. We appreciate the presentation and look forward to the continued discussion. All right, the last item on our agenda is the mayor's reports. But before we do that, Penny Pugh from Congressman Gosar's office is here. We didn't have an opportunity to introduce you earlier, so if you want to make your way to the podium and say hello. We appreciate you being here and welcome.
Thanks, Mayor and other mayors and council. I apologize for being late. Usually I come the night before. It didn't work out. So I was a road warrior this morning. I just want to, just, the news of the day is the near assassination of former President Trump. And I think that it's important for all of us to be aware of our surroundings and report things. I know the congressman has called on investigations and oversight on this to find out what went wrong because it doesn't matter what elected official, you got to take care of them. That's your job. And even if there's a slope building, you got to get out there. So there, I think that that's going to be the, the main thing right now in oversight as well as an independent council. I think they're calling on that because we, many don't trust the FBI to do what they're supposed to be doing, given recent, so, and off that subject, the Bureau of Land Management has proposed some increases in their business plan, which they've never operated like a business, so this was a little suspect. But we asked them to come to Lake Havasu and do a community meeting, which they are doing on August 5th. So I would encourage all of you to be there at the Aquatic Center at 3:00 PM. I know the mayor helped secure that and we're really appreciative of that. They're not all big changes. Some are small. But we have to remember that we're on public land and we should be able to use public land without enormous cost to us. I'm going to leave it at that. We just had a social security roundtable in a farther area of our district in Surprise, and we had almost 100 folks there at 10:00 AM in the morning. So similar to what we had in Havasu last year. And we'll do some more coming up, probably in Kingman in the near future. So I appreciate that. A lot of changes going on, a lot of taxes and social security that shouldn't be there. And we're going to continue to try and alleviate that for our constituents. And with that, I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Yeah, thank you, Penny, and thank you to the congressman for his continued support of our area. All right, we'll go on to item 12 as the host city. Vice Mayor Samla, do you want to give the first update?
Sure, thank you. So as I said, we are going to be hosting ADOT for quite some time in our area. We have the Rancho Santa Fe Interchange. It's expected to go out to bid on Friday. And then shortly thereafter, the award will happen. And then that interchange is expected to take about 18 months to construct. All the while, we'll have another interchange, the bypass, the West TI, Kingman underway. And then we have Kingman Crossing, although Todd did mention it was on hold. We are in negotiations with KRM C, our partner on that, and we're working through some of the details. They had put a pause due to COVID on the development agreement. And so we're working through some date changes on that. We also have 790 acres that we are working with the FAA. It's in process to be released with, from the FAA with restrictions at our airport so that we can develop that land and offer it either for sale or for lease. It is quite the process and frustrating most of the time. However, we did have a three-hour meeting with the FAA on Monday and we're hoping that we are seeing some progress. I want to give special thanks to Dr. Coral Evans. I hope she's still on the line, that we're working with Senator Kelly's office to make that happen. So they have been very instrumental in helping us through this process because it is a little bit of a unicorn and we realize that and the FAA is treating it as such. So again, we're hoping to have that released so we can use that land. Our downtown streetscape infrastructure project has been very vital to our community. It's been hosted two successful First Friday events. The grand opening event that happened in, in June hosted over 9,000 individuals to our downtown area. And it is said that First Friday in July was about 6,800. So we're continuing to bring folks down to the downtown area. We're also seeing some projections of some increases in sales tax revenue and some sales, increased sales to our downtown merchants. So we appreciate that. Our eastern realignment is underway. That's a project that has needed to happen for quite some time. And that's to realign a, a street that connects to one of our other major roadways to take it out of some residential area and straighten it out. So it creates a better traffic pattern and that's expected to be completed in August. And then finally, we have a park that's under renovations right now, adding playground equipment, bathrooms, awnings, and that should be expected to be completed in September. So we are not bored up here.
Excellent. Thank you for the update. We were actually commenting on the drive-in. The downtown streetscape looks amazing. So yeah, the downtown has really transformed. Good work.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor DiAmico, Bullhead City?
Hello, thank you. We just recently did the ribbon cutting for our new bridge, the second bridge connecting Laughlin and Bullhead City. So far, very successful. The only complaints that we're getting are on the Nevada side of the speed limit, 35 for, for a couple of miles. We have heard from citizens that work in, in Laughlin and vice versa that work in Bullhead, where it's actually cutting like 20 minutes off of their travel time each way. So it's something that I'm glad we got done now because with the costs going up, it's definitely, if not so much needed now, in the future it will be needed. And we know how much the costs go up. Also, August 25th, I'd like to invite everybody, it'll be our 40th anniversary party. The actual anniversary is August 28th, but we'll be at League of Cities out in Phoenix. So I'd like to invite everybody to come out to Community Park, August 25th. Festivities will be going on all day. The actual party starts at 5:00 PM. I think somebody's going to be showing up on a seaplane. What time will that be?
You're going to fly in on a seaplane.
Yeah, I won't be flying it myself, but I asked if I could do that. They won't let me. Also, our senior center is getting close to completion. Great project. And we've received not only the, the money that we've put in, we've received donations from a lot of our local organizations. And I'd like to invite you guys, when we do the ribbon cutting for that, to come out. Also, we just approved the funding for our, our new animal shelter. It's going to be out, state-of-the-art, biggest one in the, in the county. Sorry, sorry. That doesn't mean we want your dogs coming down to Bullhead, though. What else? Highway 95, Friday, ADOT has the, their board meeting and it will finalize it. And after that, Highway 95 will be ours. And I'll go easy on you. That's, that's it for now.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, Lake Havasu City, we have a lot of amazing things that are going on in our community. One that we're really proud of and has really worked out well is our certificate of necessity with the Arizona Department of Health Services, where Lake Havasu City Fire can now transport patients. So we've really worked hard over the last several years on creating redundancy within our system. So redundancy on water, wastewater, roads, EMS and public services. So this is allowing us to work in conjunction with AMR, American Medical Response, which is our ambulance provider in our area, to be able to augment their services. And we're, we're transporting to the tune of about 10 patients a day, which is quite amazing and shows the true need and the, the true partnership that was necessary to make this happen. What this has done is it's reduced wait times for our citizens that need transport. Lake Havasu City is only focused on transporting citizens in an emergent situation from their location to the hospital. We don't do any of the inter-transfers or any of those types of things. Really just taking care of the emergent needs within our community. Really proud of the leadership of Fire Chief Pete Palafis under the direction of Mr. Knutson, our city manager, to be able to get this innovative, first of its kind in Arizona, project done. And again, it's all focused on redundancy and creating services for our citizens, which is what we aim to do every single day. We are doing a lot of road work in Lake Havasu City. So if you find your way to our community, thank you for spending your money with us and, and joining us. But have a little extra patience as we work in our downtown core repaving project. We're doing some water main replacement in that area as well. And it's really going to be a great enhancement when it's all complete. Our roads are definitely important to our citizens. That's what they feel and see every single day. But our team at Lake Havasu City has done such a great job making sure fresh water comes out when they turn on the faucet and, and dirty water goes when they flush the toilet or take a shower, that they don't see what's happening underground. And so we are also having to do some additional underground work of that infrastructure and that's causing a little bit more delay and a little bit longer wait times for, for our citizens. And as we all know, change is, change is really difficult. And if we have a route that we take or a, a way that we park our car or a way that we do something in a certain way and we can't do it for a few days, it, it can certainly be a hassle. But we just ask that you have some patience and it'll be exciting when it's all done. This week, we invited and welcomed our new Parks and Recreation Director. So we're real excited to have a new Parks and Recreation Director in our community. Looking forward to some of the great work that she'll be doing in our community going forward. We also have just recently surpassed our 270th graduate of our Veterans Treatment Court on Friday. So really exciting for that. We have helped 270 people find their way to being productive members of our community and really, really proud of that work. If you haven't been to Lake Havasu City Council Chambers or our new municipal court, when we meet there next, you'll all be able to experience that beautiful facility. Really excited about that. The city council moved into the second level in March, April of this year. And it's been going very well. It's, it's very comfortable. It's a larger space for our citizens. The seats are much more comfortable for those that are attending our public meetings. And it's just a more comfortable space for, for everyone. And also, on the bottom level is our courthouse. And it's our first municipal courthouse that we've ever had in Lake Havasu City of our own. And it's already proved to be quite a success. We're able to get through jury trials at a rapid pace. We're able to have more than one happening at a time. The judge will tell you, tell stories that in our old space, it may have taken six months to, to make their way through a case. They had a scheduling change and we're able to do it within two weeks. So really proud of, of that effort going forward. We also are working on our downtown catalyst project at the corner of Quarryo and McCullough. If you've been to our downtown area, this will be a downtown gathering space that will allow for events and allow for the community to gather. Our First Friday events will also be hosted in this area and we're really excited to do that. We've had so far 800 dump truckloads of dirt removed from this area. So if you've ever been in this area before, you've probably attended events in this area. The topography of the land looked like it was flat, but if you had a stroller or a walker or a wheelchair, you realized real quick it wasn't so flat. And also hearing 800 dump truckloads of dirt tell you how much we had to, to remove. So excited for that. We're expecting that to open just unfortunately after our event season of 2025, but late, late spring of 2025, that should be online for our citizens to be able to enjoy. And I believe that I've mentioned this in the past, but Lake Havasu City Metropolitan Planning Organization, our MPO, is looking for a director. The position is posted. If you know anyone that has a planning background or an MPO background, please have them take a look at that position and, and apply. We really would love to fill that position and it'll help with some of the regional transportation discussions we had today as well. That is the update from Lake Havasu City. With that, I think we will adjourn at this point. Thank you to all those that attended virtually. Thank you for Ms. Meredith and our city clerks for helping support everything that we do. Thank you for all of you attending. For those here in person, there is lunch provided by the city of Kingman. Please stay and enjoy. We'll see you next time. We are adjourned.